Good evening, everyone in our viewing and listening audience. I want to welcome you to the Burnsville Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome, commissioners, staff.
Thank you.
Good evening. The first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Any changes from staff?
No changes from staff.
Commissioners?
None.
I would entertain a motion.
So moved?
I second.
Moved by Commissioner Julik, seconded by Commissioner Bradrick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes 5-0. Second item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the October 14th, 2013 meeting. Any changes from staff?
None from staff.
Commissioners?
No, sir.
I would entertain a motion.
So moved?
Moved by Commissioner Tahiri.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Julik. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Park Nicollet Clinic, application for rezoning from mixed use to mixed use planned unit development, preliminary and final plat approval for a four lot subdivision to be known as Ridge's 11th Edition, and concept and development stage approval of a planned unit development for additional parking located at 14000 Fairview Drive. Mr. Slaney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, there are a number of items within this application. We'll tackle those as we go. I did want to point out, from a comprehensive plan standpoint, all the properties are designated as mixed within the comprehensive plan. And that is our mixed use, that encompasses the whole Fairview Ridge's area, Fairview Ridge's campus. In this situation, we're dealing with a number of properties that are zoned mixed, but they do not have the PUD designation on them. So that is part of the complication with this. We need to adjust the zoning, but not the comprehensive plan, and then we also have a plat we're dealing with. The subject site is just under 11 acres in size. We're dealing with four individual parcels. On the aerial photo in front of you, to give you an idea, big picture, we've got the clinic here, the existing parking, and parking deck. This is a parking deck rather than parking ramp, as they are not interconnected. You've got access to the lower level, you've got access to the upper level. And this is roughly the area of the additional surface parking. Again, the structured parking is not changing, we're just dealing with surface parking for the PUD. As you know, the Ridge's campus has a number of previous PUD amendments discussing the extension of Fairview Drive, which some of the commissioners saw earlier this year. It also discusses green space. Because of the changes to the lot lines in this situation, and the changes to the green space calculations, we are amending the PUD for Park Nicollet in the subject site here. So I wanted to point that out to the Planning Commission. We'll start with the location of the surface parking lot. Again, it is just south of the existing area. It sits between the existing parking and the two remaining single-family homes on Arthur There will be one connection out to Fairview Drive. We're looking at approximately 91 stalls in this area. The darker area is parking stalls. The lighter hashed area is drive aisles. This is, wouldn't normally show up this way, except I'm zoomed in. The applicant is dealing with different construction methods for the drive aisles versus parking aisles, but from an aesthetic standpoint, you won't know the difference. This also puts it in perspective with the two single-family homes. There are lot changes involved. You'll see here, the proposed lot line comes up and across for, this is 16 Arthur Terrace, and the lot for eight Arthur Terrace runs along here. The applicant can certainly address this if there are questions, but the city is aware and acknowledges Park Nicollet does have long-term development plans for the area. The two homes are owned by Park Nicollet and rented out. I'm not completely involved with all the details of the lease, but the, obviously, the tenants know there is substantial construction going on, and long-term, we do see redevelopment occurring in this area now that Fairview Drive connection has been made. So let me summarize. Let me summarize the proposed plat. Lot 1, Block 1, Ridge's 11th would represent the clinic and all of the parking proposed. Lot 2, Block 1 is a smaller lot here. Lot 3, Block 1 is the other single-family home. And the balance of the property, excuse me, the balance of the plat, 1.87 acres is to be known as Outlot A. Put it in perspective, the now improved Fairview Drive runs like this up through the site. You'll see hashed in there. The existing parking for Park Nicollet represents 381 parking stalls. That's surface parking and structured parking. As I said, the proposal is for 91 additional stalls here, for a total of 471. Based on the uses and the square footage of the clinic, 425 are required. So the applicant's satisfying those calculations. Attached in your packet was a landscape plan as well. Pursuant to the ordinance, there's parking lot islands at each end of the parking rows. Additional landscaping and screening requirements do satisfy the ordinance. The applicant is not requesting any variances with the request. And to the northwest end of the proposed parking, there is stormwater management proposed as well. As I said, there is a one access point proposed with this parking lot extension. Currently, one exists off of Nicollet Boulevard. One exists off of Fairview Drive, and this would be a second to Fairview Drive in this So here's where it gets a little complicated, not related to what the applicant's proposing or the parking, but getting to the zoning and the lot line changes. So here we have what's existing, outlined in blue. So the clinic sits here, that is zoned mixed PUD. This odd-shaped lot that runs right through here exists as Outlot B. And this is from Ridge's 10th Edition. This was part of the application to bring Fairview Drive through. This parcel and the two single-family homes, lots two and, or excuse me, the two existing single-family homes are zoned mixed, but not within the PUD. So that is part of the application request to incorporate those. You'll notice the major lot line changes happen right in here. So the clinic parcel gets much bigger. The outlot is reduced to just this south end, and the two single-family homes are reduced in size. They are reduced, however, they still satisfy the minimum lot size and with requirements. Staff has no concerns with the proposal, and it's from a zoning and comprehensive standpoint, it's a benefit to get everything grouped into the PUD and get everything consistent. Included in your packet, page 7 of your packet, the applicant also revised the green space calculations, understanding that the additional parking does eat up some green space. It also reallocates what green space is tied to the clinic, tied to the outlot, tied to the single-family homes. All of those calculations, in the end, do result in a minor net loss, but they are all consistent with the 2003 approvals for the Ridge's campus as a whole. Staff views this as a benefit. Commissioners, as indicated in your packet, there is currently some off-site employee parking for the Nicollet Clinic. This would eliminate that. This would bring all their employees onto this site, possibly eliminate needed arrangements with Prince of Peace. And again, also, there's no deviations. The application does satisfy the ordinance requirements for the lot line changes as well as the parking addition. Commissioner's staff is supportive of the request. There are three conditions. I'll just address the first two, as they are somewhat of the ordinary. As we view, we don't view the parking as temporary, although, long-term, we understand that configuration may change. So we are not requiring the applicant to put all their tree reforestation in at this time. We certainly don't want trees to be cut down a few years after they've been planted. So we're adding a condition that that reforestation be held off until a more permanent future development. This was a similar process with Fairview and the hospital when those expansions occurred. The second is acknowledgement that the access coming in to Fairview Drive, although it will be full access, now will be limited to right in, or excuse me, right out when future development occurs and the number of trips to this area increases. The right-out only layout or design is consistent with the approvals with Fairview Drive extension and the addition of all the square footage being added to Fairview. And Park Nicollet gave us also estimates for square footage that they may be adding in the future and the number of trips we can expect. Certainly with the addition of 90 stalls, we don't see that as a huge impact. The applicant sees it as a benefit to have that full access now, with the understanding it's limited in the future. Commissioners, we've got a number of representatives for Park Nicollet. If you have questions, Brian Hill Gardner and I are here if you have technical questions from the city's standpoint.
Thank you, Mr. Slaney. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Slaney? Mr. Julik?
Thank you, Chair. Does, do the, that, I don't know what terrace it is, but the drive that serves the two homes, does that go away eventually?
Eventually, it will. Right now, it is designed with a cul-de-sac right about here, so we do have emergency vehicle and access turnaround, because it does not connect to Fairview Drive. It is, I don't want to say solely in the applicant's hands, but really, as they move forward with development, yes, we do expect Arthur Terrace to be removed completely.
And is this considered a, I mean, is the applicant looking for this to be a permanent fixture, this surface parking, for when those houses are removed, or is this like a temporary situation?
I would let the applicant address that. I don't want to speak on their behalf.
All right. And then, last question, Chris. Can you just share a little bit with us about what the nuances, or I guess the salient features are of the low-impact development agreement in the third, versus another development agreement in the third condition?
Certainly. That's a standard application agreement or agreement that we execute with anybody putting in stormwater management. It is, it's, I'll let Brian get into some of the details of it, but the template itself or the agreement's pretty typical. It's just the technical terms behind it.
But is, I would presume that low-impact has some meaning there. Which part of the development has low impact? Is it the fact that it isn't adding to the sewer system?
I can address that, Commissioner Julik. It's essentially, anytime there's an infiltration basin like this, it's a little bit different than typical stormwater management with like a nerf pond, so it's trying to filter out the sediments and things like that. And the purpose of that agreement really comes into the maintenance. You don't want, you know, sediments are gonna build up and whatnot, so to keep that, to keep that cell clean is very important for that cell to function, and therefore, we get into those agreements to make sure that infiltration basin is functioning properly.
And so this is the equivalent of like a rain garden, and there's no connection for overflow or any?
Correct. There is a connection for overflow. The overflow actually goes into a swale, and all of the water ultimately ends up at a regional pond up at the intersection of Nicollet Boulevard. So there is overflow for this basin, but it is, it does act as a rain garden. That's its intention.
And it's, the intent is that it completely, it dries out at times?
Dries.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Julik. Mr. Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, just for the record, I have a daughter who is a doctor at Park Nicollet. I've been advised by council that since there is no financial agreement with Park Nicollet, I can participate in discussions. So just want to make sure.
We look forward to your questions and your wisdom, so.
Well, not too much. This additional parking, which will provide, I think, 91 additional parking spaces, I'm looking at the lighting in that area. Chris, I'm not sure if you, if staff is satisfied with the arrangements for lighting. You know, staff would be in that area all hours of the night. Just want to make sure people are safe.
Certainly. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, the applicant did provide a lighting plan. Within these additional 91 stalls, we've got 11 new fixtures within the islands and around the site. Staff reviewed the photo metrics, and it's consistent with the ordinance.
And the lighting system will not negatively impact. I mean, they're not houses around there, except for the two that are owned by Park Nicollet, so I don't think there will be any negative impact on neighbors.
Certainly. The other benefit to this is the substantial grade change between the proposed parking lot and the homes. The homes sit much, much higher. I'm gonna say 20 feet. I know somebody in the room can be more specific, but about 20 feet taller, and these proposed fixtures are 23 feet tall. So it wouldn't be a situation where those be glaring into someone's window or anything like that, as they'll sit about even with the floor of the house.
Chair, one other question. The new entrance to the parking lot from Fairview, coming out of the lot, of the parking lot, you said that it will be a right turn only. Am I right?
In the future.
In the future.
When we, when we see more development out there, and that'll be driven by the applicant, and we're dealing with more trips, more congestion in the area, that will be limited to right out only.
So for now, it will, you can either turn left or right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Bradrick?
Just one, I was, he, I think he answered my question, but currently, as we've built the road today, there is a pass-through.
Correct.
And the answer would be, is the city will come back and fill in the island, essentially to stop traffic from going?
Yes, that would happen, that would happen in conjunction with the applicant, as they're proposing more development. We're gonna see an amended PUD agreement. We're gonna see some revised traffic calculations. And Brian can be more specific, but there'll be a threshold in there where we say it's time to restrict it.
Okay.
Chris, if you go back maybe a drawing or two, I think there's, right there, at the very bottom of the page, you can see there's another access plan. That was actually built as a part of, as the Fairview Drive project. That will become the full access upon redevelopment. So that will be basically a full access for both the new parking on the Fairview side as well as the Park Nicollet side. So there will be access to that side, it's just that it's gonna shift further to the south.
And I'm assuming immediately to the, to our right, or that would be kind of the east, that's gonna be an access to the new Fairview.
Correct. And it'll probably, I can't remember for sure from the Fairview application, but I believe that's gonna be a signalized intersection as well.
Thank you.
Chair. Mr. Tahiri?
Thank you, Commissioner. So from what I understand here, the purpose of the retention pond, the design of this is due to excessive regrading and grading work for the new parking.
Correct.
Area, correct? That is the only purpose of this pond?
It's for the additional, it's for the additional hard surface of the parking. Brian, is how oversized is it for?
Yeah, that, it essentially is just for that. It's for the treatment of the new impervious surface there. So it's not taking on, it's not serving any other areas other than the additional impervious area. There's storm sewer that'll be constructed with the project that will route it directly to that pond, so basically capturing everything on that new paved surface is what that pond is for.
Okay, so the maintenance of this pond is by the owner throughout the season, you know, any upgrade or changes?
Correct.
And city has no, has no connections or any saying to this pond here?
Other than, other than the agreement that the applicant's acknowledging they're maintaining it and will be responsible for it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Slaney. Maybe I could have a representative from Park Nicollet step forward, if you could, just Thank you, sir. If you could just state your name and business address for the record, please.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good evening. I'm Bob Rizelman, Director of Engineering at Park Nicollet, 6500 Excelsior Boulevard in St. Louis Park.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for considering our proposal. We've been fortunate to experience strong patient growth at our Burnsville Clinic recently in the summer. We've expanded some infusion and pain management services down here. We've put a new MRI and CT in, and been very successful in that. And we have this, we call a triple aim in healthcare. One is to increase population health, and that probably goes without saying for healthcare, but also to improve the patient experience and lower the cost of healthcare long-term. And those last two are hard to balance. So if we're spending money on parking or proposing to, that means we really think we need it. Patient dissatisfaction and staff have really been pushing on us to kind of solve our parking problem down here. So, and right now, we have, again, we shuttle in off-site, and that's just a big staff dissatisfier. So we have this opportunity, so we're pursuing it. So happy to answer any questions that you have.
Well, thank you very much. Maybe Mr. Julik had one, I believe it's.
Actually, I don't recall exactly what question I had, but with, is it, is that parking lot targeted primarily at staff, then?
Yes. We'd, and we'd, you know, we'd ask staff to park the furthest from the building and open up spots for patients, and we do that at most all of our sites.
What, has, have there been any special provisions for walkways or planned striping to assure pedestrian safety?
Well, recently, we, as just another building project, we added a small CT MR addition on the, near the front of the building, and reworked our handicap parking as part of that project. And I think just this last weekend, we repaved, milled and repaved our surface to clean it up and restriped some of that parking, and still probably have a little bit to do. So as far as directly for this outlot, I guess I'd have to ask John Donovan, our civil engineer, for that detail, but I don't think we've done anything particular. This is more staff parking out distant than walking in.
Well, is, where is the intended pedestrian ingress-hegress? Is it through the bottom level of the existing parking ramp?
Correct. 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 Just as it is now, they walk through the ramp, yeah. Walk through the bottom level.
Okay.
You can kind of see in this image that's up right now, there's a row of cars right next to the edge where we're expanding parking.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Tahiri?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could you tell me how far approximately distance of walking is from the furthest point, the furthest parking stall, to the point of entrance for the staff?
I'll ask John Donovan to comment on that. I could guess, but I'd be off by 100 feet, so he probably has that.
You could give us your name, please, sir.
Hi. My name is John Donovan, civil engineer with Laux Associates, 7200 Hemlock Lane, Maple Grove, Minnesota.
Welcome. Thank you.
Yep. Chris, if you would do me a favor, can you go to the site plan?
Yes, I can.
Please. Oh. Yeah. So, Mr. Commissioner, members of the commission, each bay of parking stalls and drive aisles, 60 feet. So it's 60 feet from the furthest, so that's 120, 180, and then the parking ramp is probably another 180, so we're probably looking at 360 feet total to the building?
To the point of entrance?
Yes.
From what I recall, my previous practice, 300 feet to 350 is within the acceptable range of a walking distance from the parking stall into the, to the point of entrance. Any further than that could cause hardship, so-called. So, thank you for the information. I guess that's satisfactory for me.
And as Bob mentioned, I think, they think Park Nicollet believes that they're improving the situation from what's the current operation, and, you know, the 360 feet or whatever it is, is an improvement from what's happening to date.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Currently, staff park over Prince of Peace, right? So they, they also even have, they have to cross Nicollet Boulevard.
Oh, overflow staff park over there, correct. And, and we... And, and we, during key parts of the day, we shuttle them in or provide transportation from Prince of Peace to the clinic.
So this is shortening the walking distance if you don't have the transportation for that?
Correct. And I assure you, staff would much prefer to park here than offsite.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody wishes to step forward and comment or have a question, feel free to do so at this time. Seeing no one, I would close the public hearing and open it for discussion amongst commissioners at this time.
Chair, I would be in supportive, as stated, so I can support this.
Any other comments or remarks? Commissioner Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I had, as you know, I would, I would look at the green space and the removal of trees and for the applicant to have this parking provided within 360 feet of their entrance, they had to remove, they will have to remove a number of trees. I'm glad to see that arrangement is being made, that when further development is happening, that reforestation will be included. So I want to commend staff and the applicant for taking that into consideration. I think this is a very, is a good move on behalf of Park Nicollet for staff and for people who use the facility, and I would encourage commissioners to support the application.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Singh. Mr. Julik?
Thank you, Chair. Generally, I'm in favor of the application. I keep looking at the layout and I don't see anything for pedestrians. I don't see, I believe there's a sidewalk along the new Nicollet, but there's no striping, there's no, there's no sidewalks for all the staff to walk through essentially to two other, or another parking lot to get to the facility. And I use this clinic, and even in the existing ramp, there's no real striping or anything for pedestrians, other than maybe a walkway or a striped walkway right across the entrance where all the cars are coming in. But I have some concerns about pedestrians here, and I just, I just don't, the intent is for the pedestrians to walk 200, 300 feet to get to their place of employment through essentially a parking lot with, with no, nothing outlined for pedestrians, as far as I can Chris, in your review of the, of the plans, what was the discussion around pedestrians?
Certainly, Commissioners, if we, if we had full redevelopment of the site, we'd be in a better situation to redesign or relayout. In this situation, granted, it is, it is a good distance, but we're also dealing with portions of it in an enclosed parking ramp. There was no concerns from our end with, I think relatively low traffic, or traffic speeds and so forth. We can certainly work with the applicant. I think there may be options out there, we just didn't review at this time and see what's available for the pedestrians.
Is there a sidewalk along the Nicollet?
Or the?
Fairview Drive.
Fairview Drive extension?
I don't know. Based on the curvature of Fairview Drive, it is somewhat of the longer way around. I think human nature, they'll end up cutting through the lower level of the parking ramp, but certainly understanding your concerns, we can look, look with the applicant and see what's available.
All right. Well, I guess my thoughts are, I think it probably could be handled by striping or whatever, but just some, something to address the volume of pedestrians walking through the, if you can work with the applicant on that before you go to council.
As I said, the sidewalks is there, but I don't, I don't see these employees utilizing yet.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I will look for a motion unless there's any other comments. Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I beg to move that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council approval of the application by Park Nicollet Clinic for rezoning from mixed use to mixed use PUD, preliminary and final plat approval for a four-lot subdivision to be known as Ridge's 11th Addition, and concept and development stage approval of a planned unit development for additional parking located at 1400 Fairview Drive with the following three conditions. One, the applicant is responsible for a minimum of $20,127.14 additional tree reforestation with future development of the property. Two, the applicant acknowledges new access for the parking addition shown on the plans will become a right-out-only access in the future when the Park Nicollet Clinic is expanded. And three, the applicant shall execute a development contract under low-impact development agreement with the city prior to release of any building permits for the project.
Thank you, Commissioner. Second, anybody second? Commissioner Brederich, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes 5-0. This will go to the council on Monday, November 4th. Good luck. Thank you for coming.
Our fourth item on the agenda is PRC acquisitions for LLC, application for variance to the acquired setback for a monument sign located at River Ridge Apartments, 12901 County Road 5. Mr. Brixis?
Yes. Commissioners, this application is fairly straightforward. The county has acquired right-of-way for County Road 5 and Trunk Highway 13. Site right here is located along County Road 5 and 13 is on the upper portion of the diagram. The acquisition of right-of-way occurred for the improvements at the intersection of 13 and 5, and as a result, the River Ridge sign was removed for the construction, or new construction of the street. Following diagram shows the right-of-way acquisition. You see the square here and at the corner, right-of-way was, new right-of-way was acquired. This previous sign location should be pointing at this square, not within the right-of-way, but at the square. That was where the sign was located. The proposed sign would be relocated back within the property, but to meet that requirement, they are requesting a variance. We currently require a five-foot setback from property lines as well as a five-foot setback from parking. This is a monument sign that's being proposed to be replaced. This diagram shows a greater detail. The green line represents the previous property line. The blue represents the newly acquired right-of-way. Existing sign location was within this, this square here. The new location is just beyond the square. The applicant is proposing a zero setback off the right-of-way and a five-foot setback off of the parking lot. The proposed sign is going to be a monument sign, no more than 5 feet 10 inches in height, 20 square feet in size. So it meets our guidelines for the type of signs that is allowed within this district. In evaluating the variance, we make a determination as to, is this a unique condition to the site? In this case, the hardship is a result of public action with the right-of-way acquisition. In looking at the relocation of the property or the sign, we looked at a number of sites. There are some trees you can see along here. In citing the proposed sign, we tried to avoid the trees, and as a result, the variance request is being proposed. In examination of this, we believe that the hardship is caused through public action. We are recommending approval of the variance with two conditions. The first condition is that the minimum of one foot setback be maintained from the property line to the right-of-way line. This will reduce the setback from the parking to four feet, one foot from the property line. The whole intent of this is to avoid trespass or maybe an encumbrance across the property line. The second is, is that we don't have full details on the sign construction. We don't know if the sign will be illuminated or whether wiring needs to go in. As such, a full sign permit will be required for the erection of the new sign, so this can be inspected and properly determined. I'm here to answer any technical questions, but Dan Wilson is here on behalf of the applicant to answer any other questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Brixis. Any questions for Mr. Brixis from the Commissioners? Any questions for Mr. Wilson? Mr. Julik?
With the, you don't have the details on the monument sign, so we don't know whether you could fit with one foot off the?
We have the, we have the dimensions, but we don't have the determination of whether it's going to be an illuminated sign or else. We can fit it one foot off, but then the setback will be four feet off the parking lot.
So your, your main change is just recommending where?
Yes, within the Boulevard area. Zero setback off the right-of-way line, we would anticipate at some point in time we're going to have a problem, so we would, just want to be safe.
Thank you. Mr. Selenia, did you?
Commissioners, I just wanted to add, I apologize, I was going to put the image of the sign into the PowerPoint, and I, it slipped my mind. It is the same, it is the same fixture, structure that was there previously. It was removed, put in storage, and will be placed back once the final location's determined. It's five feet 10 inches tall and under the 20 square feet maximum by ordinance.
Thank you. Any? Commissioner Singh?
Mr. Brixis, ordinance requires at least a five-foot setback from the property line.
That's correct.
The applicant is requesting zero, I mean, the setback should be, the sign should be right at the property line.
That's what they're requesting, yes.
And staff is recommending one foot from the property line.
That's correct.
Just want to make that clear.
Yes.
Thank you.
I guess my question for Mr. Wilson is, on the one foot, if you could step forward, give us your name and business address for the record, please.
Good evening, I'm Dan Wilson. My business, Wilson Development Services, we're acquisition relocation consultants. Today, we represent Dakota County.
My question, I guess, is just, is the one foot workable from your standard, or how, what's your position on that?
The one foot is workable. If anybody is interested, here's a picture of the sign.
Commissioner Tahiri?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With approval of one-foot request that you're applying for, is that, is your sign flat, straight up? Is there any overhang or that may even approach the property line further, or is it just flat, straight up? I guess I just want to, well, from this, it answers my question. I just want to make sure that sign doesn't go and extend two feet off and...
20 feet, 4 feet off.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, from this is very, very straightforward. Thank you. I answered my own question.
I can be in support of this. I kind of walked around there, and there's really no other better spot to put the sign. And the one foot back, I believe that to be positive from the standpoint of our Minnesota winters, and when you're plowing the street, we've, we've got some monument signs we've put up in the city on County Road 42 that were put in because of some other road issues with County Road 42 and 5. And when they plow, you lose the sign for a good portion of the year. So I know you don't want to get it too far back, but at least a foot back from the right-of-way, I think, should get it back a little bit from the standpoint of snow buildup, so I certainly could be supportive of this.
Thank you. Any, anybody else with questions or comments? Mr. Julik?
This is more for Chris. Thank you, Chair. Is, do we, do we need to put something in the condition about also allowing the, the change in setback from the parking lot? Or would that just come in the permit? Or should it go in at this point?
No, the, I'm comfortable with the language here because it is, it is a variance, whether it's two variances, one from each side, or one variance all on the right-of-way side, it would still be compromised.
Mr. Julik, if you would like to have the number one, one foot from the property line and four feet from the parking lot, I think just to ask clarity.
That, that works.
You're okay with that?
Mr. Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to clarify, so we're one foot from the right-of-way. What other physical improvements are within the right-of-way? It looks like a sidewalk. In relation to that sidewalk improvement, how far would it be?
There's Boulevard, then there's a sidewalk, then there's green space. It's actually adequate. There's quite a bit of green space in between to fit that sign. So what's going to be compromised is the flower garden that goes around it, or the rock garden that you see. Obviously, it will not have the same configuration and the after condition.
But dimensionally, from that, from the right-of-way sign, right-of-way to the sidewalk, what's the dimension of that Boulevard?
I have photographs.
Let's go back one more.
I think what we're looking at is, I think we're looking at 10 or 12 feet behind, off the edge of sidewalk to edge of right-of-way.
So there'll be plenty of room for snow storage?
Yes.
Okay.
The Boulevard is over four feet, and then sidewalk is four feet there before we get into this area.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Tahiri?
Thank you, Chair. I have a question for Chris. Could you, Chris, could you explain again the purpose of this variance? Again, what is a specific hardship that we are considering on this?
Absolutely. Commissioners, the hardship is taken by a governmental agency that was, that was done by no action of the property owner. And this is one of the few, we don't deal with a lot of variances, but this is one of the few that actually meets the specific letter of the law when it says it's not a result of the property owner. Certainly, the apartment complex didn't wish Dakota County to come through and take additional right-of-way, but they did. And because of that, now they're left with a hardship of trying to find a place to put their sign back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the difference between five foot, which is the zoning, and the one foot? Really, it's four feet? Okay.
All right. Any motion, I think, with the change of specific?
Did you open the public hearing?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. This is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing at this time. Anybody that has any comments or questions, please step forward at this point. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion, I think, with the clarification to be specific on what we're looking at.
I will...
Yep. Thank you, Commissioner Julik.
I move that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council approval of the variance, the required setback for a monument sign located at River Ridge Apartments, 12901 County Road 5, with the following recommendations. A minimum one-foot setback shall be maintained between the property right-of-way line and the freestanding, freestanding monument to accommodate potential right-of-way improvements. And a four-foot setback will be allowed from the parking?
Correct.
Lot. And two, the proposed freestanding monument sign shall be subject to permit.
Thank you, Commissioner Julik. Anyone want to second that motion?
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Singh. All in favor, say aye. Second by Commissioner Singh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that would pass 5-0. This will go also to the Council on Monday, November 4th. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Good luck. The fifth item on the agenda is a public hearing, Gary Fairchild application for a conditional use permit for cabinet signs located at 3100 Highway 13. Mr. Slenia? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, again, the, the last public hearing for the commission this evening, let me get to the right slides. We are dealing with a conditional use permit to allow cabinet signage. As the ordinance dictates, individual letters are not permitted unless the applicant would go through a conditional use permit, make the argument that the cabinet sign or the box sign, whichever term you want to use, is architecturally integrated into the building. We have a property that was redeveloped back in 2012. Fairchild Living Trust is the property owner. Gary Fairchild is, is the operator. Did a wonderful job. As you know, the Menards Building was vacant for many years, and then eyesore, and any number of nuisances for the city, created a multi-tenant building out of that. That was done in 2012. Significant was, construction was done on the property, and this summer, or I should say, last spring, NAPA Auto Parts occupied the building. Later in 2013, Fairchild Equipment occupied the building, and signs were placed on the building without permit. I've got a couple images. I'm sure if any of you have been by the site, these are box or cabinet signs as outlined by the ordinance, because there are no individual letters. So these are the three signs in discussion. Down the building farther is NAPA Auto Parts with their signage and their individual letters. I'm sure you'll all recall the, what the building looked like before, and then images of the design currently. Again, due to miscommunication or miss whatever, the applicant put up the signs without permit. That didn't give staff the opportunity to acknowledge that they were cabinet signs versus the individual letters. Through discussions with staff, the applicant requested additional times before the signs were removed to request the conditional use permit through the Planning Commission Council to see if the existing signs could or would be permitted. From a staff standpoint, we certainly appreciate everything Mr. Fairchild's done. He's been a great partner in the community. In this situation, because we have a multi-tenant building with one tenant's face left to go, the current NAPA tenant does have a conforming sign. These are non-conforming. Staff's not supportive of the application. Certainly, the, the Planning Commission can comment on that. It is a public hearing. I know Mr. Fairchild had a commitment this evening. John Messenbrink is here representing Mr. Fairchild, and John was the construction coordinator for the, the project in 2012. Thank you, Mr. Slenia. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Slenia? Mr. Taheri?
Thank you, Chair. Does, this cabinet sign, that is completely against city ordinance and requirement as far as the constructions, details, dimensions, so forth?
There, there are exceptions when, as outlined in the ordinance, when you're dealing with logo, often, I think the example in the staff report, a target logo is sometimes tough to do in individual letters, or a specific emblem. That can be done in a cabinet, as long as it's a certain size, as long as it entails the emblem of the, of the business. In this situation, NAPA, that is their logo, in conjunction with individual letters, if this were to stand alone, that would not be permitted, would not be consistent with the ordinance. There's other examples of cabinet signs. If, if they're, if they do not exceed eight inches in height, and they're accompanied by individual letters, that's also permitted. But in a situation like this, where certainly there are logos tied into these images, but it is not just a logo, and there's no individual letters accompanying it.
So it's not just a raised, raised letter. This, what I'm trying to say, the owner can go back and pick every letters and just, and we kind of carve it out of wood and stick it in there. Then we have a raised letter sign. Would that satisfy the ordinance as far as the signs are, the letters are raised?
Correct, correct. These could be, I don't know how cost prohibitive it, it would be, or if it would be, but I feel these could be, these could be altered to be consistent with the ordinance. They do need to be individual letters. They need to stand off at least one inch from their, their background.
So does, does owner claim this sign is temporarily signed, or is it permanent? What, what is owner definition of the, of this sign?
This is the, the sign there. This is the permanent sign they're pursuing.
Thank you.
Mr. Singh?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Chris, the sign we are looking at, Fairchild Equipment, that, according to staff, is non-conforming.
Correct.
What happens if a business does not have a logo? I rent, this is a multi-tenant building. I rent a part of the building, and I'm going to be selling clothing. I don't have a logo. Now, how do people know that that's a business that sell clothes? If I can't put up a sign and say Singh's Clothing, that would be non-conforming if it's that size?
If it's in a cabinet sign. Let me, in, in perspective, if this said Singh's Clothing, or just clothing retailer, or whatever it is, you're looking at individual letters. The city doesn't, doesn't obligate you to have a logo or a symbol. We require, we obligate you to put your text in individual letters.
Got it, okay. The applicant is asking that the city consider the sign there as architecturally integrated. Now, does that mean with logo and wording, I mean, letters?
Commissioners, it's, it's very subjective. Yeah, it is, and I believe it was done like that for, for a reason, to give the council and planning commission some flexibility, because no two, no two signs are the same, no two business logos or designs are the same. Signs are getting very complex now, and, and it was left somewhat vague for interpretation. In this situation, just in retrospect, NAPA did a nice job. They wanted some, some corporate colors, some identity, some, some blues and yellows. They were able to do that in a manner that staff leaves is, is architecturally integrated into that building, rather than a, a two-dimensional cabinet sign, if you will.
Thank you. This is a multi-tenant building.
Correct.
Isn't it required that the owner work with staff, city staff, in coming up with a plan, or a sign plan?
It is, Commissioners, and that was, again, working with the applicant, there was quick turnaround on construction of the building and getting things in. I don't want to speak for him, but I believe he, he was nearing completion on Fairchild, and he wanted to get some signs up on the building.
So there was no plan submitted to the city?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Brederich?
Chris, just to clarify a couple things. From our background, the City Council in May of 2012 did adopt some housekeeping issues. It was, I think, as read, as part of the changes, cabinet signs were specifically described as logos, not to include text, symbols. So really, the housekeeping issue that we addressed in 2012 with the City Council speaks directly to this.
Speaks, speaks to this and predates these occurrence.
And then the installation of the sign was June of 2013.
Correct.
Okay. And then typically, as Commissioner Singh mentioned, there's usually on a multi-tenant building, or any kind of complex like that, there's the need to apply for a signage plan that encompasses the entire property. You know, I think we did that with Best Buy when they relocated.
Correct.
Okay. So with the NAPA sign being in conformance, did that just kind of happen on its own? There, there was no property sign?
There, there was no sign plan. It did take a few renditions with NAPA to reach that point. I think, obviously, people start with the most economical solution, and that's oftentimes a cabinet sign. So there was some push and pull and some discussions and, and, you know, that, that also was, I believe, in part, staff's error. We should have held up NAPA to get that sign package for the whole building, rather than let, letting them go in first.
So the NAPA sign was put up first?
Correct. NAPA went in first, can't, at least a couple months earlier.
Okay.
It was spring of 13.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Taheri?
Thank you, Chair. Chris, some, some multi-tenant properties, owner have, sometimes they have the standard guidelines or standard design. In this case, you're not aware of any standard guidelines the owner may have?
Not yet. I do know the applicant was pursuing them, but again, NAPA was under the gun if, to say, to get a sign up before they opened their doors, as was Fairchild Equipment. I think, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, one last question for Chris. If, if commissioner, Planning Commission deny the applicant, the applications here, typically, how much time do, does the city give the owner to bring the sign down and, you know, comply and...
I don't know the, it's usually about two weeks. There is a specific number in, in our ordinance. I don't know if it's 10 or 12 days, but just about two weeks.
If the owner requests extension and to work with city, that's subject to...
Subject to staff's discretion. Certainly, we understand the owner's request to get in front of the Planning Commission Council. Once that decision made, I'm comfortable he's going to abide by council's decision.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Messenbrink need, should step forward. I, I'm sure you want to say something, and we look forward to your words if you'd start with your name and business address, please.
I'm John Messenbrink. My business address, 7765 East 175th Street, Prior Lake.
Thank you.
Gary wanted to be here tonight, but due to some circumstances, he couldn't make it. But I'll give you a little bit of background. And when Gary closed on the building in October, we had some dates that we had to meet with people from other countries because of all the different equipment that he represents. The signs that he put up, believe it or not, is the only thing he did on that project. I did everything else. I got the phone call about a month before our grand opening. I thought the signs had already been ordered, but he called me and asked me for dimensions. I gave him all the dimensions on the building because he knew there was a percentage that he had to meet. I, I did work with NAPA also on their sign. I didn't know he wasn't in contact with the city. And two days before the grand opening, the truck rolls in, and I see the signs. They do match the logos exactly for the three companies that they represent. The Fairchild Equipment, that same sign is on all five of their offices. The Yale sign is the same, and the JCB sign is the same. They all match exactly the logos and the signage that you would see if you went to the factories. That's how they were designed. I don't know how Gary slipped up on not getting the permit. I mean, a lot of things were happening, and if you were familiar with that building at all, from, we started October 26th of 2012, and we've got the building full now, except for one, one bay is, is left to be finished out, and I hope to be starting on that within a month. There, there was a kind of a time restraint at the end to get everything up and done, because he had people from overseas coming in for the open house. I mean, it was a, it was a big deal to them. This is the biggest building that they have. I don't think he did anything on purpose. He ordered the signs. He thought they were correct. When they came, we didn't have any choice but to put them up because of the, all the advertising and everything that was going to be done for the grand opening. We haven't had any complaints so far. I don't know if the city has, but we were, we were possibly just hoping that there might be a way, that there would be some way we could get a conditional use permit for these signs. We've, or I shouldn't say "we," Gary has done an awful lot of stuff to that property, and he never told me no one time when we were remodeling. If something needed to be done that would look better, it wasn't even a thought. He just said, "Do it." And Chris can testify to that. He, he just said, "Do it the right way." The signs slipped by. We were totally involved with the NAPA project. I built all of it. And when the signs did show up, I knew there was going to be an issue the minute I saw them on the semi, but it was too late at that point. I did not get a shop drawing on this particular item. But if you go to any one of his projects in the areas, his signage is the same. They're all matched. Their logos are identical. It, it's a bad situation. It's hard for me to talk about something when I know that it probably, it isn't right. But it was one thing out of, out of a million that we did in about a six or seven-month period that kind of slipped through the cracks. And now we're just hoping that there's a possibility that we can work this out somehow. There is about $33,000 worth of signage there, that if we don't get any help from the city, there's no way to re-change these signs. They're all Lexon. They're, they're very, they're great signs. I mean, they are. The only problem is it's a cabinet sign. Structural, product-wise, they're the best you can get, but they are cabinet sign, and you can't deny it. And I, I won't sit here and say anything else. But it was an issue that it did slip through the cracks. I mean, they didn't do that on purpose. I mean, it would have, it would have been more money to go with the other type of sign, but, but it never, it just didn't come up. I mean, they were matching what they already have on their other establishments, and that's the long and the short of it. I mean, there's just nothing else to say about it. The building does look good. I mean, he, he put a brand-new front on the whole building. If you look at the before and after pictures, I mean, it's something that he and the city of Burnsville can be proud of compared to what it was there for the last eight years. And it's full, generating revenue, so...
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Mr. Taheri?
Thank you, Chair. This, this cabinet sign, is this, help me to understand the, the makeup of this. Is this a plywood with painted?
No. There are two, there are two layers of Lexon. You have to get the artwork done, and then every one of those colors that you see on the sign... the sign is a layer of Lexon. That's all built and put together. Then it's a huge laminating machine that the sign lays over, and then it generates heat, and it actually draws Lexon over the sign to form that bond. It's an actual square box, and then all the lights and all the integral parts of the sign are boxed inside. Everything is aluminum. They were all three made the same way. They're all lit inside with LED lights and with an electric photocell. They come on at the same time that our outside lights do. But they're an expensive sign. It's, the problem is, is they weren't raised that one inch. Their logo doesn't do that, by the way. If you look at their logo, it's not like the NAPA logo. All their signs are flat. If you look, even in the magazines, look for Yale or JCB, their signs are all the same way. He copied the artwork of the companies that they represent. And the Fairchild Equipment Company is their own sign that represents their business. And then the other signs represent the companies that they sell for, so.
One more question. I'm going to ask you, with all respect, the same question I asked Chris. I don't mean to contradict your answer. Is the owner planning to keep the sign permanently, or is there any thought or entertaining any idea of replacing it to comply with city requirements?
He doesn't want to be out of compliance, but I know he doesn't want to change the signs if he doesn't have to. Two issues. One, he's already spent a lot of money on these signs, and if he has to change them, you know, we'll have to put brand-new signs up, and, you know, we can probably reuse these at some point in time. But Gary's wishes would be hopefully that he can get some grace and possibly just leave the three signs and move forward.
From the city point of view, I respect your answer, your thoughts, but from the city point of view, and I think, and from public, I'm sure you put a lot of efforts and money into the sign, but if you stand away about 50 to 100 feet, it makes no difference what all that construction went into this versus a piece of plywood we paint glitter. It looked the same. I think that's probably one of the reasons the city had concern about, you know, the aesthetic of the sign.
Oh, I agree. It, you know, it's just a shame that it happened, but it did, and this is, this is a problem that we're all faced with now. It, I don't know what to say. I mean, Gary has done a good job on everything down there. He really has. And I wish I would have ordered the signs. I had a little better handle on things, but towards the end, I think they were getting nervous that we weren't going to make our grand opening.
Right up quick.
And he ordered the signs on his own, and this is what happened. And I did not get shop drawings on these until the day before they showed up. It's too late at that point, yeah. It, just one of the things that.
Well, thank you. Thank you for explaining.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions?
John, do you, I certainly understand where you're coming from, and I appreciate all the money that was spent on the building because he has, he's improved it dramatically. I think the thing that we have to deal with is if we allow this, then what happens the next two or three applications that come to us when that particular, they don't apply for a sign permit?
No, I understand.
With the city upfront. The sign company bears some responsibility here. As I researched this, and I was trying to understand the process, I had a conversation with the sign company, and they're responsible, when they produce a sign, to contact the city and pull the permit. So in this case, I believe either A, they were told not to pull the permit, or they chose not to pull the permit.
I would believe they chose not to because I, Gary would never do that. I've known him for a long time, and that's just not Gary. I think if you guys have met him at a few meetings, that just isn't the way he is.
You know, I just, somewhere along the line, somebody.
The ball was dropped somewhere.
Somebody chose not to apply for a permit.
My question, I guess, is this, is that a PUD down there?
It is. Commissioners, it is a planned unit development dating back from when Menards vacated the site, I think it was, you know, '05, or when they relocated their store, I should say. It was about '05.
I've got one question. If it's a PUD, that gives the commissioners and the council a little bit of leeway where it doesn't have to continue on. It may be possible to grant this instance under the PUD, but not open up the floodgates for other people, if you get my drift?
Is that, maybe, Chris, you can comment on that issue?
Certainly. Commissioners, Mr. Chair, the site is a planned unit development. The application Mr. Fairchild submitted was for the conditional use permit. So I guess two parts to that. The first is, within the ordinance through the conditional use permit, you've got a very specific way of looking at it. Is it architecturally integrated or not? That's what the conditional use permit would say. The PUD does give more flexibility. Since that's not the application, since that's not the public hearing we're looking at, I just caution the Planning Commission, we shouldn't go too far outside of the conditional use permit. Nobody can deny that the improvements have been great, and the neighborhoods benefited, but we have a, we have a conditional use permit in front of us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Slaney.
And then, Chris, if we do move down that road, the, I wanted to clarify, you said the staff does have some flexibility on the timeframe, because there's, in my personal experience, there's no way you can replace these signs appropriately in two weeks. I don't, I don't believe that they could design, build, and install an appropriate sign in a two-week timeframe, so the staff does have the flexibility to work with the...
Certainly.
Once a permit's pulled and...
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, the applicant, the property owner have been, but nothing but good to work with, and staff's able to adjust that timing as needed, as long as we know we're moving in the right direction.
I've got one more question. Would it be possible for Gary to go at this through the PUD? If this was tabled?
That is an option. If the prop, or, we would, we would have to table it. Al can probably help me out. We would not want the Planning Commission to take action on this. We'd need some documentation from the property owner.
Mr. Brakesis?
Commissioners, applicant, it's important to understand that the PUD is not just intended to, is a means to get around an ordinance. The PUD is intended to promote a superior design and those type of components. A few things are missing here. One, this is a multi-tenant building, and we do not have a comprehensive sign plan for all the tenants, so we don't know to what extent whatever we approved for this tenant would carry over to a third tenant. Additionally, I think when you start talking about the PUD, you have the flexibility by granting it by, through the conditional use permit right now, and the measure is, is it integrated with the site design? I don't think that's going to change just because you change it from a conditional use to a planned unit development. You're still going to have those same findings that you all have to make. Does this sign fit within the context of the overall building design within the overall city? It's not, the PUD is not just a ways to go to run the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Brakesis. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Messenbrink?
All right. Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing at this time. I'd open the public hearing for anybody who wants to comment on this issue. They could step forward at this time. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and open it for discussion from Commissioners.
Just on the concept of going CPU or CUP versus a PUD amendment, even at that, it doesn't, even if we acted on the CUP, they could come with a PUD amendment next, tomorrow anyways, right? Because it's just, I got to wait six months with the same type of application.
Correct. There would be some discussion probably with the city attorney to determine if, is it a new application? Is it a completely different application or not? Going off of what Al said, I think the question, again, regardless of the, what type of application it is, staff and the Planning Commission will be faced with, what's the benefit to the design? As Al said, you want a superior design through the PUD that does allow some benefits and some trade-offs. If we bring this back as a PUD, what is the benefit of the proposed signage versus what's the benefit of the signage as a conditional use permit? The Planning Commission can certainly make those findings tonight.
Mr. Singh, did you have something?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I think, Mr. Chair, I agreed it with, Mr. Fairchild has done an awesome job on that Menards property. Obviously, there's improvement. He has done a good job, and we commend him for that. However, we have an application for a conditional use permit for something that is totally against ordinance. I have a concern as to what precedence we're going to set if we allow this, or we even table it so that the applicant can come back and ask for a PUD. You also have to take into consideration that there has not been any effort to get a signed plan for a multi-use building. So it's, in my, where I sit here and look at it, I think the Planning Commission need to recommend denial of this, and Mr. Fairchild, the applicant, can come back and, you know, take whatever action they need. I'm pretty sure that the city council, if we recommend denial, the city council can give the applicant time, you know, rather than just taking it down within 12 or 14 days, give them some time so that they can get another sign that would be according to our ordinance. But I have a problem recommending this application or even tabling it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Slaney, did you want to say anything else? Okay. Mr. Brederich?
I also have support of the denial. A couple of things, I think, as been stated earlier, I'm concerned about approving something and what do we do for the next two or three applicants that come in. I do believe, I think they have a couple of options. They can possibly reuse the signs. I believe that, per the comments we've had about a PUD, there's an option of replacing them with signage that fits into the ordinance, or they could come back to us with a sign plan for the entire project that might integrate some of these signs architecturally into the building, if I'm understanding that correctly. So there's a couple of options where the signage can be changed and meet, meet the zoning ordinance, I think. If I'm misspeaking there, you'd have to tell me.
Commissioners, I think that's a problem. There are some options. It's difficult to design on the fly and come up with a solution that's going to be feasible for the city and the applicant without some dollars involved.
But somehow, a plan could come back to us, or could come back with a plan for the entire project for the remaining tenant plus this that could make them architecturally integrated into the building, or the signs could be replaced, or really a couple of options.
Okay.
That's all I have, Chair. Thanks.
Thank you. In looking at this, I feel, I feel terrible for Mr. Fairchild. A couple of things that stick out for me is the, sort of the, the ordinance was reaffirmed not very long ago, which for whatever reasons were set forth at that time, the city doesn't want these signs. And so if we're looking at, just from following the ordinance point of view, I think I'd have to support the denial. I agree with Commissioner Singh, I think, and with Mr. Brederich. I would encourage the staff and council and staff to obviously work with Mr. Fairchild to see, you know, give him, maybe if he needs more than two weeks or something like that, that would be, seems reasonable, but obviously, I don't think they're conforming. And it's, recently reaffirmed that that was the plan that the city wants, so I think I'd have to support the denial at this time. Anybody else? Mr. Julik?
I guess I'd have to agree with staff and with the recommendations or direction that the rest of the commission members are going. I can truly sympathize with the applicant, and they did try to do all the right things here. It is a great redevelopment of that site, and I do recognize that the applicant will, you know, have to undergo some expense to remedy the situation. But there was a very significant effort on, I would say, liberalizing and clarifying the sign permits that this body undertook, as well as the city council, all within the last year or two. And I guess I would be reticent to kind of go away from that and allow kind of, you know, kind of a long-term, I should say, deviation from that, from the ordinance. We understand it was a mistake, but I think the ordinance is there for a reason. It was fairly well thought out by staff, by this body, by city council, and I guess for me, I will go with staff's recommendation.
Commissioner Thierry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also support my colleagues, Commissioner here, and their recommendation. I have a question for Chris. Are the city ordinance for these signs specifically for exterior of the building, no matter where? Or can the owner use this some other places, either inside or outside the building, versus throw it away?
Good question, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, unfortunately, the ordinance, the ordinance is connected to any exterior signage. So these signs couldn't by ordinance be placed on the back or anything like that. We do not get into interior signs. So if, if the applicant has the ability to move it inside for some reason, that would be permitted.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to take a little different tact on this, if I could, and just put some thoughts into it. Now, Chris, the applicant received an amended PUD in 2012.
Correct.
And what, what point in the year did he receive that?
It was, it was October, I believe, of 2012.
So the sign ordinance had been amended at that point?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. In that PUD amendment application, would he have had the opportunity at that time to do a comprehensive sign plan that would include the types of signs we're looking at today?
He would have had the ability to do the comprehensive sign plan. Staff would have still raised concerns with cabinet signs. Certainly, it's, it's difficult to say if that would have been approved or denied.
Okay.
But he would have had the ability to discuss it then.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I would look for a motion this time. Commissioner Broderick?
I move that the Planning Commission recommended the city council denial of the conditional use permit for cabinet signs located at 3100 Highway 13 West, Burnsville.
Second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Teary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes 5-0. This will go to the city council on Monday, November 4. Correct. Thank you. Good luck. Last item on the agenda is any updates, Commissioners? Any updates that we need to be aware of?
Can I, Chair?
Do staff, any updates?
Commissioners, I just draw your attention to the November 13 meeting, which is the commission's next meeting. That is a Wednesday night. Because of a holiday and some other public meetings that week, the commissions moved to Wednesday rather than Monday.
Thank you. Mr. Slaney?
Mr. Chair, can I ask, Chris gave us a copy of the new roster for members, for Commissioners. I don't think we had a new one since the new members came in.
I, I can distribute that. No problem.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. All right. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, I believe. Passes 5-0. Thank you. Thank you.